Why put me to wait because it doesn't always start when we start. So good morning, this is March eleventh, two thousand twenty five, next county commissioners meeting. We have the web here to talk to us about the R I T monthly update and so thank you. And you can go ahead.
All right. Um, since our last report, uh, we've been busy, uh, one thing, uh, a big piece is Andrew, we have an agreement to help assist the city with launching their new website. And so Andrew has been going over there in the afternoons, um, dedicating lots of time there to help them with training, preparing the website and launching it. Um, so that's been going on, they they purchased, I believe, about forty hours of time to to get that started, so. Uh, we're making progress there, I think some delays based on some, you know, feature creep, you know, things start to get live and people decide, wait, I want to do this and this and this, and so there's some of that which we expect, and that's why we pretty much said forty hours was what we need, so. Hopefully, we'll be able to fit it all in that time.
We're on track, so we're hoping maybe early next week launch.
That'll be nice, and then they'll have their new dot gov as well, which will be nice, they were able to get a dot gov, uh, website. Um, other things, uh, the city firewall, that's been something we've wanted to replace, uh, for a while that was finally installed in the rest of the new equipment they had ordered. Uh, we were able to take care of that, we did that on, uh, President's Day, when we knocked that out. Auditor's office, uh, I believe we've submitted everything the state auditor needs from us on an I T side for that. That's complete, and then we'll have the next office, I don't know if it'd be clerks, probably next is usually, uh, what what'll come up.
Is that audit similar to what we get where it has you a bunch of questions?
Yeah, yeah, there's a bunch of questions from I T standpoint of, um, you know, how are you doing your backups, how are you? Uh, and then you have to give them information about like your users, your password requirements, all those kinds of things to see, um, audits. Um, we also, uh, we installed, uh, so we moved the old TV that was here to the second floor conference room. Uh, we'll be installing some more equipment that we recently purchased, so that will be a full fledged, uh, conference room where you could do, um. You could, uh, display things on the TV there, you could do, uh, web conferences, um, so that'll be a nice addition for our H R office up there. Um, we installed, uh, the second livestream camera. Um, another thing was, uh, the sheriff's office had ordered a bunch of new, uh, M D Ts, which is their mobile data terminals, the computers in their cars. Uh, they had ordered those at the end of last year, uh, Jared was, uh, very helpful in getting all of those installed. So, um, all their new, uh, computers are installed for their, uh, for their cars. Um, we also, uh, purchased a, uh, data destruction equipment, so. We we've gotten quotes from various vendors to come in and destroy old, uh, tape media, uh, hard drives, those kinds of things that have been taken out. Um, we have a way to destroy hard drives physically, um, which is is time consuming. Uh, and when we reached out to some of these companies for the old tape style, um, drives, because we didn't have anything to do those. Uh, you know, it was right around fifteen hundred dollars just to do the tapes. Uh, well, we figured out for about twice that, about thirty four hundred dollars, we could purchase our own device that could do it ourselves, and then we'll not have to bring another company in to do that in the future, we'll just be able to destroy the media there. And that'll work for hard drives and tapes, so basically it's this little drawer, you put the tape or the hard drive in, you slide it in, and it basically has a giant magnet inside that just completely wipes anything that's on that media or hard drive. So we'll be able to securely destroy, uh, the data here as opposed to, we were using, uh, either a punch or like a drill press to go through the hard drives before, and for certain things, we may still use that, uh, but, uh, for hard drives and tape media in the future, we can just destroy it and that, um, that device, so I figured long term, that's the most cost effective solution, and we don't have to plan it out with a company and have them come in and do all that, we can just take care of it as it comes in, we can destroy it all. So I've gone through all of our tapes, there's a, a big box of tapes that I've, just between things, I'll just throw them in the, and wipe them and.
Now, when you say tape, that's a real, the real type.
Yeah, uh, so they're square cartridges, uh, and that's what we, uh, still utilize, they can store a lot of data still on those. Uh, we still use it, utilize that as our off site or disconnected backup. Uh, so a lot of protection against, uh, like things like ransomware. Uh, what they'll do is, they used to just go in and encrypt your machine and then be done. Uh, but because people were recovering from backups, those kinds of things, they started targeting backup systems as well. So by having the tape drive, that tape is physically in our hand or in a safe. It, that data can't be touched afterwards, so that's kind of a, a last resort backup that we have to say, we know we have our data here, they take a little longer to recover from because it is a tape and it has to read all of that data off of it. But it is kind of a, a last resort, but a surefire way that we know we have our data backed up for the county. Uh, so that's why we've maintained it, a lot of people have moved away from the tape, but it still works pretty well for us.
And we, we want to destroy the ones that are obsolete.
Yeah, so these are ones that have been sitting in, yeah, these are sitting in, been sitting in boxes for years.
Obsolete data.
Yeah, all this data is, you know, you're talking, most of it is at least ten years old. Um, and so that, that it's beyond any records retention or anything that we would have, so. Um, and and they're mostly just backups, so, uh, they're not any critical infrastructure, and then for the hard drives, any computer that we remove from service, we destroy the hard drive when it's retired. Um, now, sometimes we will recycle the computer itself, send it off to recycling, but we don't include the hard drive with it. Or sometimes we'll put them on gov deals and the computers we sold off, but again, they will have hard drives in them when they're sold. Um, and so instead of just having this giant collection of hard drives that have potential data sitting on them, uh, this way we can actually destroy the data and then send the drives off to be recycled, um, so. Yep. And, and then we, uh, so the water wastewater, they've gotten some new vehicles, so we've, uh, we had to go out. They had about five different vehicles, a couple of them that, um, the devices weren't responding, or, uh, we had to install new devices or swap out devices for our asset tracking that we have on county vehicles, so we, um, we took care of that the other day.
You might want to explain about that tracking system.
Yeah, so we have a, we have an asset tracking system, it's a, there's a G P S in them that basically just gives, uh, data of like, uh, let's say someone goes out. We ran into it with recycling, Matt Walker, he he goes out, but if he goes out by himself to a remote area and no one's heard from, we can pull up and say, okay, where's the vehicle, do we need to go check on someone or? And then it also provides data of, you know, excessive speeding and those kinds of things that we can kind of monitor and look out for, uh, seatbelt usage, those kinds of things get reported, it also sends information about maintenance items for the vehicle. So if a check engine light comes on, it'll send an alert and actually tell you what the code is, and it reads all that right from the, the car's computer system. So, uh, we just have the, those on the vehicles as a way to, um, you know, cover the county assets, especially even if a county vehicle is stolen.
Like maybe three or four years ago, we started.
Yeah, I would say twenty one, twenty twenty one.
And, uh, it it doesn't directly help with our liability insurance, but of course the likes that we have that on there, it is a best practice, so I think some other counties have gone to that, but it it does give us a lot of good data.
Yeah, it's one of those things too, if, you know, if there is a, a, an accident involving a county vehicle, it's easy to be able to say, okay, well, you know, here's the data, you know, this person, you know, we weren't a fill, you know, for the whatever issue, so it's just kind of a nice thing to have. Uh, and it's nice from the aspect of, um, you get those reports on, you know, um, even fuel, all that kind of stuff comes back to there, try and sell that data, um, so it can be useful. Ongoing projects, we're still deploying city and county computers. We're upgrading some of the computers, we ordered a bunch of, uh, memory, uh, modules. So the computers that are kind of on year three or four of our replacement plan, you know, we tried to go five years, so computers are like year three or four. Um, it's pretty inexpensive to buy memory to upgrade those, so we're gonna just go ahead and start going around and replacing and upgrading those computers. That way they'll last the full five years and you're not gonna have real any, um, performance issues that people are running into. Um, and then if for some reason we need them to last a little bit longer than the five year, this will bring more life into the computers as well. And allow us to reuse them for something once they are replaced. Uh, so we, we purchased a bunch of that. Uh, I've been doing the tape and data destruction of old, uh, drives. Uh, we're continuing to monitor, update security controls. Uh, we've been working with, uh, the auditor's office, treasurer's office, and clerk of courts on their server upgrades, uh, mostly been waiting on the vendors. Uh, Trevor's been working closely with them, I think we've got all the, uh, servers are in a test phase. Um, so we'll pretty much be ready to deploy them and move over to the new systems within the next couple of weeks, no problem, so that'll be, that'll be good, we've been wanting, we're hoping I've done that last year, but, um, various delays with vendors and things put us back to this year, so. That'll be taken care of very shortly. Um, and the access control system, the upgrades have been, uh, have started, they've done the elevator so far. Um, I don't know what the next step for custom wired is, I know he was working on, um, getting the new systems deployed, so I'll check with Aaron on that. And then, uh, yeah.
So on, on the, the access control system, is this going to allow the, um, um, John family services to be able to do that reports?
Yes, yes, this will provide a lot more data, uh, that will help job and family services for sure. There's other features like, uh, we'll be able to, uh, use an app on the phone to be, like, someone calls in and says, hey, we're having a special meeting, we need these doors unlocked. We could pop on the app on the phone, unlock the doors remotely without having a remote in, log into the system, play around with it until we get it to unlock, it's kind of an antiquated system on how, we just have too many doors for the system that we have. Um, I think when we, when we reach out to the manufacturer, one, they don't really make the system anymore, and two, they said, we're the largest system they have. Like, uh, well, I guess we're the guinea pig for a couple of minutes, so, uh, this new system, we won't have any of those, those problems moving forward. And we can start integrating things like, um, keypads, so you could have a keypad on external doors. Let's say nights and weekends, not only would you maybe have to use your badge to badge in, but then you would also have to put in a code. That way, if someone's badge fell off, got stolen, lost, someone else wouldn't be able to come in after hours and just get in, they would also have to know your code. In conjunction, a lot of, uh, counties have gone that way, I know Richland County, they deployed a system similar to that, uh, for the same reasons. Um, so we're hoping, uh, to get that ruled out soon. Um, and then the, the things that we've been talking about, the life size camera replacement for sheriff's office, it just hasn't, they've had a lot of other changes and things going on over there. Uh, so that just hasn't been on the priority list. And, um, nine one one, we're working on those installations, and then the sheriff's office fax system, another one that, um, it's just not been a huge priority, this current system's working so far. Uh, we're keeping our eye out for other, um, things that we can do, I think Verizon has a system that we were looking at, uh, moving them to, but again, it hasn't been a huge priority uh, as of right now, so we're kind of let, let the dust settle with the new administration, everything out there, and then we can work into that later in the year, so.
Yeah, would you talk a little bit about the fax systems, there's a lot of people go like, people don't do fax.
Yeah, so we're stuck using faxes, a lot of, um, criminal justice information, uh, HIPAA, you know, fax is still king in those kinds of fields. Um, just because people are concerned about email encryption and all, there's all kinds of, uh, requirements for that, so when it comes to that kind of, kind of data, people still love using fax machines.
Still employment verification has to be faxed too.
Yeah, a lot of that, um, now, a lot of that is going away, um, you know, fingerprints, that kind of stuff can all be done electronically, that used to have to maybe be faxed or mailed in, um, but the problem with fax machines is, uh, the F C C no longer requires telephone operators to maintain the analog phone lines. Um, basically, they're, they have been, uh, you know, put out to pasture, so to speak. Uh, they're not required to maintain those anymore, the cost of phone lines is gotten crazy, you're talking forty, fifty dollars a month for a phone line, for an analog phone line. Uh, so it, it gets expensive and it's only gonna get more expensive and less reliable. You used to do analog phone lines because they usually were the most reliable, I mean, your power could be out, but you might still have a dial tone at your phone, you could be able to call my one or well, that's, that's switched, uh, a lot, so. I've been trying to find a system that takes us off of the old analog phone lines, which the only thing we still have that are on analog phone lines is basically the fax over at the sheriff's office, and we have a couple lines here that are, uh, the backup for nine one one that are on analog. Everything else has been moved over to a digital system of some sort. The problem is digital systems and fax machines, for some reason, don't get along very well, they just don't work together well. Um, so there are purpose built systems, um, that are designed for fax that are digital. Uh, so Verizon has some, a lot of different companies have come out with them the last couple of years because the F C C no longer requires the analog. They call it pots lines, plain old telephone service. I don't know who came up with that, but that's what they came up with. Uh, so a lot of times they're internet based, so we can give, uh, interconnect connection from our systems, but then a lot of times we'll have a cellular backup. So let's say, uh, internet's down and we still need to fax some, something out, uh, so a lot of times they'll have a, uh, cellular uh, modem in them, and then they could actually use the cellphone towers to send out the fax. Uh, so that's what we're looking at for the, the sheriff's office and for nine one one here, because they're just two critical places that, in an emergency, you need that kind of data to get out the, you know, fax warrants and those kinds of things, so. We're looking into it, it's just, um, one of those things that you're, you're kind of stuck using the antiquated system, uh, but just, it is what it is, we just have to work with it.
So the word for the day is pots.
Pots, yeah, plain old tel, our plain old telephone service.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It does seem like with so much salvage terrorism that having those systems is really a safeguard.
Yeah, um, but what's, what's interesting is always interested me about, I, I've always found the, the facts, especially for HIPAA and criminal justice information, they're basically forced to grandfather it in, um, but they have all these stringent requirements on email encryption and all this stuff. But, uh, analog telephone, I mean, if someone plugged in a splitter in between, they could listen. I mean, they could listen into that information, I mean, everyone knows it, but it's one of those things where like the medical industry has so much pressure that they just like, okay, you can grant, now they're technically, when you fax something to a doctor's office, they're supposed to call the other side and make sure that someone is standing beside the fax machine when they fax that data over. But how many doctors' offices have gone into where the fax machine has a pile this high stacked on top because they just keep getting faxes in and no one's waiting on the other side, but it's just one of those things where the analog was so hard to try to get away from that it just got grandfathered in, which now is so antiquated, no one's really even looking at it because who bothers with a fact or email somewhat easier now.
Yeah, the dark web doesn't want to be part of the box.
Yeah, they don't want any part of that, it's, you know, you gotta have physical access or email, you can log in from anywhere, so that's why it's a little bit more of a concern, but. I always just found that a little bit interesting that they require all these stringent guidelines for email, but for fax, it's kind of like the wild west still, but, oh, well.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, taste.
Yeah, so we've got a ten thirty, but I hope we go ahead, we've just got a couple resolutions today, um. So on Thursday, the senior levy committee was in, and, uh, so they gave a recommendation on the distribution of the senior levy funds for twenty twenty five, and this is now for you to adopt those recommendations.
And, and then for those who may not seen what those recommendations were, I'll go ahead and read those off in the dollar amount so that, uh, public will be aware of that. Uh, I think on your motion, yeah, there we go, so, and you put them in alphabetic order. So I'm gonna read off the, uh, the group and the dollar amount that we will be awarding to those who applied for the senior levy funds. Uh, the way these funds operate, it's a, we, they get paid out, uh, quarterly, and then when we get to the last quarter, based on the amount of uh, revenue that comes in for the, the senior levy, because, uh, we, we project how much money is gonna come in, and so the, the funding is based on that projection, uh, if the projection is, is inaccurate, um, then the dollar figure that the entities would get on that fourth quarter would be reduced based on the amount of tax hours that come in. So center of hope, and again, alphabetic order, not in, um, in any particular order other than alphabetical. Center of Hope in Knox County has, um, being, uh, granted fifty two thousand five hundred. Centerburg Senior Citizens is granted two hundred and seven thousand dollars. Frederick Town Senior Activity Center, sixty thousand dollars. Knox County Department of Job and Family Services, Adult Protective Services, a hundred and twenty five thousand. The Knox County Tax Force for Older Adults, ten thousand dollars, and that's basically for the farmer's market, um, coupons, uh, tokens. Um, Knox Health Planning Partnership, Senior Health and Wellness, sixty five thousand. Sanctuary Community Action, which is in Danville, that's a hundred and five thousand. Station Break, five hundred and fifty nine thousand. United Way of Knox County, Ohio, ten thousand dollars, and Y M C A of, um, Mount Vernon, ten thousand dollars. That total anticipated distribution amount is one million, two hundred and three thousand five hundred dollars, one million, two hundred and three thousand, five hundred dollars. And so that's what our motion will be made on, so if I can have a motion for those.
Our motion approved.
A second.
And then, any discussion that we need to? Okay, and so all those in favor say aye.
With those next connectors, I think probably Thursday, depending on the next phase, you'll have a contract with each of those entities. And we actually enter in the contract, give them the bonds, and there's a statement in there that that states on receiving all of the funds that are anticipated. So you'll see those Thursday, and then you'll approve those and that, and you'll get those out to each entity. Once they sign and return those, then we can release the first quarter funding, which is usually around the first of April, first part of April, so.
Do we, do we give them an option to come in and pick up that contract, or we mail that?
She emails it to them.
Yeah, because, yeah, we always talk about how inefficient the mail system.
Yeah, we email until she gets that, Penny gets everything to them quickly, and then they'll get it back, and then we'll release, but we can't release the funding until we have the signed contract back.
And the contract says it has some deliverables in there.
It, it does, and then also as part of their application, you know, they're providing uh, their financials and who they're serving and those kinds of things, and then the senior levy committee validates that when they go back through the next year.
Right, so we know the services actually went to the seniors and what the services looked like, what they were.
Right, that's correct, yep.
Yeah, and they have to report that too, is quarterly too, is that?
Yes, they report quarterly, they do quarterly reports. Okay, the next we have is just the Knox County Sheriff's Report that he's required to submit each month, and for February, there were five thousand eight hundred twenty three meals. At one dollar, and he says.
So one question for me on this report, what is, uh, a deduction of non-food cost off of that total bill, you know what non-food cost represents?
I do not.
I do. Supplies that pertain to the food.
Like napkins, silk, plastic silverware, that type, so.
Non-food.
Non-food. Why would they deduct it? Is it coming out of a different account? I think the meal report is just how much it costs for the food per meal, so you pull that out.
So this just represents food, not total cost of serving?
Yeah, just food cost. You've got it.
Okay. Thank you.
Um, and then we'll just need to, hey, we get a motion on that each time, right?
Yes.
So we enter the record, so.
Need someone make a motion.
I'll motion approve.
A second.
Okay, those in favor say aye.
And then we have just the monthly income, uh, for the investment, and for, uh, February, we had interest income of one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty four dollars and sixty two cents. And then of that, uh, in, in the star investment account for the arrow phone was eleven thousand, five hundred sixty two eighty six and program interest of one dollar ninety three cents.
They have motion to accept that.
Motion to accept.
Second, those favors, yeah.
All right. And, and Bill, I think our ten thirties here, if we want to go and do that, then I'll come back, I have a few things to, to commissioners, I want to, after he's done.
Yes, uh, Scott.
Yeah, welcome. Because we have Scott Hillis with us, he's gonna talk to us about the chip program, and thank you, Scott, for being with us, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Scott, for being with us, and, um, yeah, so tell us about the, the chip program, and, and this is being televised, so you'll be educating those that are, that are watching right now too.
Okay, well, the chip program is a program that is primarily funded by, um, the federal government through HUD. Most of the funds come either as C D B G block grant funds or home funds. There has also been a portion that's funded by the state of Ohio, in the Ohio Housing Trust Funds. Uh, that varies year to year as how much they kick in from the state. But the program is essentially established to, um, protect the safety, um, and the structure of homes that people live in throughout the, the county. The largest program or activity that they run under the chip program is, um, rehabilitation, um, they've got both homeowner rehabilitation and rental rehabilitation, they both, um, have eighty five thousand dollar limits. That can be spent, that includes, um, the soft cost or the implementation cost as well as the co, the hard cost that actually go into the house. When you do a rehabilitation, uh, the entire home has to be brought up to R R S standards, which are essentially, um, residential standards established by the state of Ohio. So you'll go in for a rehab and you'll have to make sure that all of the major units of the house are up to code. Um, that's why it's an eighty five thousand dollar program, because you, there's quite a few parts of the home that have to be addressed. The other major activity is, um, home repair, once again, they have homeowner repair or rental repair. You can only receive thirty percent of the total grant to use for home repairs, and they've raised the limits on those also, there are now thirty thousand dollar limits. But when you do a home repair, you only bring one or two items up to code, so a lot of people will do roofs or, um, furnaces, hot water tanks, sometimes electrical system, but they can usually only do one or two systems for that limit. With the rehabs or the rehabilitations, there is a mortgage placed on the home. In the past, that mortgage was divided into two parts, eighty five percent of that amount would decline over five years. The other fifteen percent would remain on, and when the person moved out of the house or sold the house, they would have to pay that to what's called program income into the community. The state did away with that a couple of years ago, they've made it totally a grant program. So now, one hundred percent of the rehab cost get, um, decline over five years, so there is a mortgage in place that's essentially put in. That's essentially put in place by the federal government to keep keep people from taking a home and flipping it, you know. Go buy a house, get a rehab, then turn around and sell it, make a profit. So if you live in the house for five years after the rehab is done, you owe nothing, if you move before then. Every year it's gonna go down twenty percent as to what the cost of the rehab was. On the repairs, there is not a mortgage placed, um so it's a. It's not going to require a five-year decline, or that someone actually live in it for five years, because. Uh, there's not a mortgage or anything placed to force that. There are other two other programs or activities under the chip program, homeowner assistance. Typically, that combines helping a family get um down payment assistance to purchase a house, and then re- the house has to be rehabbed. So that it fully complies with the RRS standards, it also has a eighty five thousand dollar limit. And it does require a five-year declining mortgage as well. Um, the final activity that they still uh have is tenant-based rental assistance, which is really akin to section eight. It's money paid just for rentals, the difference between it and section eight is however that you can pay. The first month's security deposit with it, but you can't under section eight. And also you can pay your utility down payments or deposits with with that type of assistance. What ORDC? ORDC is a company that's in Koshopton, we currently service close to thirty communities throughout the state of Ohio with their chip programs. Almost all of them have, over the years, experienced. The program so that now they typically choose owner-only owner rehab um and owner home repair. While there are rental rehab and rental rehab programs available. Spent a couple of problems with them, number one, the the owner that's renting it has to pay fifty percent of the cost. And a lot of communities we've got into show up at the very beginning, and the. All of the landlords, of course, want the program, and yes, they're gonna pay half. And then it gets right down to it, and all now they don't wanna pay half, or they don't like the way the bids came in, they think that they could do the work themselves cheaper. So they back out of the program, which analyzes the county in in any future grants. So mu- uh all of our communities now have stopped doing the rental rehabs and the rental repairs. Um, most of them. Maybe all but one has stopped doing the tenant-based rental assistance, that's for my experience, been for two reasons. One is the communities feel that there's already section eight available that addresses rental needs. And second is, most communities are trying to get money to not only help the housing. Um, market, make, you know, make neighbors' houses up to code. But they're also remembering that when you do this program, not only are the low to moderate income persons who are getting their house repaired. Um benefiting, but also contractors are benefiting because they're coming in and doing the work. So it's it's supporting the local community um in the tax base.
And I know Scott, Bill, Commissioner personally, I do talk to you, so I'm I'm very aware of this. Grant program um from prior, my prior appointment. The issue we were having in Knox County, so commissioners until just a year or two ago. Knox County did this, we've done this for, I think, decades. And we had a joint grant with the city and the county would apply together under chip and under CDBG and get this funding. The housing authority, the local housing authority administers the grant, so they did, at that point, they did the income qualification and. Uh, worked with the contractors and that kind of stuff. The reason that kinda, I think Scott's here is to talk about it, because it's really gone away. Because we were having a really difficult time in the community, we couldn't get contractors to wanna work with the program. There is a lot of strings that the state requires contractors to have, especially the lead, when it comes to the lead. Abatement to get contractors, have to be lead certified and that kind of stuff, and that makes it really difficult to find contractors that. Wanna deal with the program. And so that's why it it kinda really just had has stopped here, I think in the last year. Is the grant, the last grant they had, I don't think all the money was spent, like Scott said, then the state kinda penalizes you on future grants because of that. Cause the money doesn't get spent. And that's really where we've kinda come to is unless, you know, unless maybe you have a. You have a process, we can get better, but we just, we had, I think they told me there was one contractor that was willing to do anything, and. And then he didn't even wanna deal with the program, so there were, I think there was a need, the homeowners, I think. I've always enjoyed the program, but we couldn't get anybody to do the work, that was, that was the problem.
Yeah, and and part of that goes to there's enough work out there for the contractors without jumping through a bunch of hoops, and so. Do you have an answer for that as to?
We have seen that in some communities in the past, however, we've um. We don't feel it's a real big problem at current, because we're running the program in. The rehab part in Lincoln County, Baskingham County, Olmwood County, Koshopton County. Basically your neighbor, and we found that all of these contractors don't mind traveling. Some some travel up to an hour to an hour and a half because they want the work. There was the fear during the last couple of years that there was enough private work, but that has, from our experience, it slowed down. The state requirements on the contractors, there are requirements. If the house has got lead, and if it's a rehab, we have to do a lead assessment to see if there's lead poisoning or in the house. If there is, then yes, you have to have a licensed lead abatement contractor bid on it, we have licensed lead abatement contracts. Contractors in every one of the counties that that will do the work. Also, the state saw this as a problem, not only for chip. But they've run some other programs, they have the Healthy Homes Program and the the Ohio Department of Health Lead Program. And the same thing was happening, you did had contractors that didn't wanna get the licensure, well, now the state. Under a different program, but under the um Lead Safe Ohio Program. Started paying for the contractors to go to the training, and then paid for them to take the testing, get their license, so. We saw a a nice increase in the number of contractors who were wanted to and willing to do lead work. As a result, now they've got their licensure, and they're looking, Lead Safe Program's gonna wind down in a year. So they're looking for other work, and and most of them have indicated to us they wanna do chip work.
So two things, uh, do you share this contractor information? With uh the counties you just spoke of?
Yes.
So you we can get a recommendation of contractors that would want to do this work in this county?
Yes.
Secondly, I'm interested in a homeownership assistance program. Is that qualified first buyer, first time buyer?
It does, but the the problem that. We have done the program in some communities, and some communities have have opted to do it, the problem has been, it's often. Not easy to find a low to moderate income person that's gonna, because they've gotta qualify through the bank for their loan. And a lot of times, it's a lot of red tape and jumping through the hoops. Um, so we haven't seen very many communities that want to do the homeownership assistance, simply because. Not only do they have to jump through the hoops of qualifying, and the bank has to agree. They then have to go to educational course typically put on by Ohio State. Branch in each um each county. That teaches them how to budget their money, how to spend their money, and a lot of them just, that's it, they don't wanna take part in. Tell them how to spend their money.
And as Scott said, we did that before years ago, Barry, and it is really hard, because they, you have to find. Home buyers that are low income. But then they have to have the credit to satisfy the bank and the income to satisfy the bank, and that gets you, because they have to do this through a private bank. So and that really gets.
So the thing I noticed is an eighty five thousand dollar limit may be down payment assistance only or combined with. So it could be down payment assistance only that.
It could be, but the down payment assistance part of it is is capped at either five, I think it's five thousand is. Is what you can use for the down payment assistance, the rest is used for the rehab. So if you're not gonna do, if the house you're buying already meets all of the code requirements, and you don't need the rehab. Then the the amount you're gonna get through homeownership assistance is.
So not enough really to.
To justify going through.
And the rental, the rental we's talking about, that is exactly what happened here in Knox County as well, we we had contractor, we had rental. Landlords that said, oh yeah, we would really be interested, and then. Again, like, well, we don't wanna do all of that, well, you're required to do all of that to get it up to code. Well, they didn't wanna spend that much money, or we heard the same thing, we can get that then cheaper. So we don't wanna do it, and but now the county signed up to do those programs, you gotta deliver. And so really, I agree with Scott, the the only two that have really been successful here locally has been the home rehab and the home repair. But that's really it, yeah.
Talk about the um, um, the five-year declining mortgage, um, so. Person goes through this, the five-year decline, are we, are they actually paying on that mortgage? Or it's it's uh after, it's hit a hundred thousand, people know we're not doing a hundred, but.
Right.
So the year one, eighty thousand is what the the debt goes down to. Year two goes down to sixty and keeps going down, so it's not money that's actually coming out of their pocket for that declining part.
Exactly, as long as they stay in the house, they're not gonna pay anything. And then after five years, there is no mortgage anymore, so they can do what they want, but that. Oftentimes will keep a family in a home for five years, or there are, there are situations where people would just pay it off because they wanna sell their house, then. It depends on the market law, if if the market's gone up enough, they may decide it's worth paying off that mortgage, and we can make a profit on our house.
Commissioners, you signed off on a mortgage last week, that hit the five year, and we were forgiving, that comes off the lien, so that that's. What Scott's talking about.
Uh, so the really, if they're already on the home, they qualify for up to eighty five thousand dollars worth of re- rehab.
Right.
The thing you need to be careful, there is the age of the person that's qualifying, because I'm sure if they deceased, that lien carries on to the. The estate, I would imagine, correct?
But you oftentimes you have the ability to, um, the commissioners can write off the mortgage.
Okay.
Um, the HUD's got a rule that if they're putting this kind of money into a house, they want a family to stay there for five years, but. A lot of times, if if it's a senior and they pass away. HUD's not going to have a problem with the commissioners forgiving the mortgage, because. It's not a situation where someone came in and flipped the house, and that's really what the mortgage was set up to prevent.
And so it's an income-based. Um, so do you have any idea in Knox County? How many people um that are homeowners that would possibly qualify?
I I don't, I didn't bring the the chart with me today.
Okay, so there is a chart, and they have some calculation.
Yeah, there's a chart that tells how, and I'll, I, when I get back to office, I'll email it to you, but it it um, it's breaking down for every county in the state. And it will tell if you've got one person living in the house, this is the maximum income that can be made, two people, three, four, five. All the way up to, I think, six or seven on the chart, but it would, I think it's around. Forty to fifty thousand dollar range for one person, so it's not what you used to think of as low income, but I guess. Um, it's low to moderate income, so it's um eighty percent of the average income.
And I see you have application dates June twentieth, so how tedious is the application?
Pretty, pretty time-consuming, because to start the program. A community first, if they're going to have a consultant run the program, they'll have to do an RFQ. In the paper for two weeks and get consultants to submit their proposals, then they'll score them and pick who they want to hire to run the program.
Is that still the case after April first?
Yeah, this is a separate program, our uh CDC of Ohio handles our CDBG grants, but this is separate to that.
Okay.
And they're not doing that anymore, the CDC of Ohio, so yeah, so this would be a separate.
Yeah, we've worked with CDC, um. We worked in a lot of counties with them, but, and we do the same thing they do with CDBG grants, but they have decreased. They still are running the chip grant in Koshopton County. But they hire us to do the work, they don't have a housing specialist, um, so we just do the work for them, but. I I think it's a good program, and I think. You know, we, in addition to doing chip, and in in addition to doing allocations and special grants, downtown grants, and that kind of stuff. Two years ago now, the the state started the Lead Safe Ohio Program. It really into twenty four is when they started um allocating the money, and we picked. We ran the program as a grantee, so we had fourteen counties that we ran the the program for. Uh, it's still got a year to go, but we received almost ten million dollars in federal funds directly, and then paid them each. In each community, and in every community, we met the goal that the state had established is what they would be able to spend, so. I think there's enough contractors out there that are looking for work that would do this program. You're you're probably in all reality, if if you partner with the city, you're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grant. That's going to be probably six rehabs and probably twelve repairs. I I don't think it's in a two-year period, I don't think you're gonna have enough. A significant problem in getting contractors to eighteen projects.
Have you talked to the city?
We have not yet, we wanted to talk to the county first, because we knew in the past CDC was doing your your chip program. Um, through the county, so we thought, well, we.
Yeah, and actually, the last times we know it, really, the city is the lead now, they handle the financial piece, the county. Um, for the chip piece was all coming out of the city, the auditor's office was paying all that, it was a joint grant, but.
But they were.
Yeah, they were the financial lead, yeah, they have been for about five years, I think.
Okay.
And do we know whether the city's still doing?
I don't know, well, no, because it's a joint grant, so. We would have had to, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll have to talk to the city then, um, see where they are on that, um, and then if. Um, do you have any questions for?
No, I think he answered my question.
And you'll send us all that information?
Yes.
And I'm assuming an owner can only get one grant for, like, uh, if they own the property and they're renting it out?
Have to be living in it.
They have to, okay, they, when you say.
Part of it, you have to live in it, if you do the rental rehab or the rental repair program, then you don't have to live in it, you could be the. The owner that's renting it out, but if you're in the homeowner program, you have to live in the house.
So probably only one project for the rental as well per um owner?
That, no, they've allowed landlord to have multiple.
Just a matter whether they wanna invest in that.
Right. It it, and we've had, say, we, I've seen it happen, unfortunately, where. Show up at the first meeting, and there's landlords there, and everyone wants to do this rental program, because rentals need fixed up, and it's exactly as you said. And it comes down to, all right, well, let's do this, while we don't wanna spend that. It it doesn't need this, and that's, well, it does, because it has to meet code. And even if you do repair, it's like, well, I can install a water heater myself, cheaper than that. Yeah, but this is not your money.
Yeah, and when we did that before, during that, this was been some years ago, but we did more than one in the same grant, but we. Think we did it for the landlord that brought fifty percent to the table, then no other landlords wanted to do it, so once it was offered. Nobody else wanted it, the first landlord said, well, I'll do another one. So we did it, because one, once you sign up for those deliverals, you you gotta hit the target.
Well, Scott, appreciate you coming. Jason, who would you recommend you talk to to say that be Tanner?
Probably to start with Tanner, yeah. Yeah.
All right, yeah, thank you.
Commissioners, I've got just a couple of updates, and I know you gotta go to Delaware County, so um. Last week you did sign that that transfer that came through uh was for five hundred thousand dollars. For the payment to JFS. For the payment to J F S, that was half of their budget of the million dollars we budgeted to offset. Spenditures and shoulder services. So we did release the first half of that. I timed that up to give them half. When tax collections come in and then half and the other half in August with second half tax collections coming. So we have released those. I've given J F S the check and they certainly want to pass along their thank you for that. The H V A C project went on in the county service center. Todd gave me an update. Excuse me, last week, and it's a little over eighty percent done. I think we're down to. He's working, they're working in the prosecutor's office because we had to wait till that was available to get in there. Excuse me, that was the only area left on second floor. They're almost completed with third and then there's a little bit on fourth and then that'll be it. So. Making very good progress there, just about done. We had the meeting out at the fairgrounds with the fair board last week on the swine barn that's being built. That project's ready to get going. I think they're gonna start, maybe by the end of the month, they're gonna get started on that. They obviously they'd like to get it done before the fair.
Yeah.
So um, that's going well. I went up Friday and met with uh D K M M on the compost site. Um, we are, that contract's actually. Ended, so we're just on a month-to-month basically for the. Um, management of that. So Jen is working on getting a new contract together, not a new contract, but a new bid document. We're gonna get that out um to the vendors that are interested. And get new pricing and new options on leaving, if we leave it the way it is, what's it gonna cost? If we modify the days it's open, what's that gonna cost? So once we get that information, I'll I'll get that to you, but that that process is ongoing. Uh, today you're gonna sign a transfer from the general fund to Victims Assistant Voca Grant up in the prosecutor's office. This is a budgeted item. Uh, it's twenty-five thousand, three hundred eighty-four dollars. This um is the portion that the county has paid. The the feds cut that grant a few years ago, so we pick up the benefit cost. And then the federal grant pays for the salary and operation of the of the grant, but we pay for the salary. So this, they're requesting the money and this is the transfer for you to sign and let us transfer that money to them. And again, it is in the budget. It's actually a little less than what we budgeted.
Need a motion?
Uh, no, you'll just sign this and I'll make it. And I think all, others than that, that's all I have for you.
We give anything from the city about the Fairgrounds Road thing that we need to sign?
Yes, uh, Penny has it. It came back yesterday. It'll be on the agenda Thursday.
Okay.
Chip has signed it, the city has signed it, and it'll come before you Thursday.
Okay.
Do you want to talk about that since you brought it up as what that's signature?
Yeah, there was uh some residents on Fairgrounds Road who objected to. Some of the processes and procedures in that build. Uh, they got a hold of myself and Brian Ball uh from the city's engineer's office. Uh, had registered some concerns and Brian Ball took the the lead on it and got it uh. Written up correctly with the city prosecutor signing off on their part. But we have a small agenda, I guess, that we have to sign off to complete it because we were in contract with them for that, so. I think it's preliminary more than.
Well, I guess one last thing I just remembered when Barry was speaking there, so um. Commissioner Lester called me this morning, so. Been working for about almost two years to get this sign replaced at the Memorial Building. City Council voted it down Monday night, four to two. So they will not let us put a sign where the current sign is, replace the sign. So that sign is rotting away over there. I'm not sure what our alternatives are. I guess we'll circle back around and.
I think they're big, from what I understand for the conversation was their big thing was digital. They didn't want a digital sign, I think, was. The protest that I heard, uh, it was all about digital signing in the city, so.
So that's your objection, that?
Well, so that, I don't think even what. I, it was my understanding what was going before them was. Just to allow us an easement to put the sign there because that's city property. Between the sidewalk and the road is city property. So it was my understanding was we were asking for a permanent easement to put a sign there. So Cameron Keaton, the county engineer, the the city had asked us to get a survey of. What we were asking for the permanent easement or where the sign sits. So we we did that, submitted everything, had to go through municipal planning, think they pushed it on into council. And they did three readings and they voted it down. So we will come up with. Another option.
Cardboard and wooden stake.
Yeah, the sign, the sign doesn't look good. Um.
And I don't think we can move the building outside the cities.
We can't, so.
Maybe we get a design or at least a preliminary or.
We've done, we're working on that. We've had a couple of different designs and.
It's the digital piece that they are.
Well, that's, I'm not aware of that, but.
That's what was said to me, that uh I guess, quote unquote, there was uh a lot of. Community. Uh involvement as far as letters and and voices of what was gonna go there.
The idea was, so what's been going on is between the columns, they hang banners. And it was tearing up our building. They had tearing up the column. So we said no more banners hanging between there. And we had to have a painter come in and and fix the columns and then paint the columns. So now they were putting signs down between the sidewalk and the road. They put banners and signs. And the city can't say no to that because they're temporary signs, but they don't necessarily look great in there. So the thought was, instead of putting banners out every time there's a event, let's get it. I think they wanted a digital sign. We'll just put the events as they change on the sign. Versus putting these banners up all the time with metal poles and all that. And I think that was their idea about going digital. Um, but we will adjust and we'll figure something else out and then we'll. Deal with the city again, I guess, but.
Yeah, and one of the sign options was to put it up on the steps, right? Was that one of?
Yeah, and I guess it was a little disappointing too that, you know, like. I'm sure none of you, I don't think the prior commissioners, myself, no one from council ever reached out to get clarification on anything about what you're doing or. Ask us to come down and speak on what we were doing. So.
That was my next.
That was a little disappointing too, I think that they could at least, can somebody come down and tell us specifically what you're doing and why you're doing it or?
Well, and you spent a lot of time jumping through their hoops to do what they requested, so it is.
So I met with the law director a couple of times. He was very helpful. He was very helpful to lead us on the path we needed. So appreciate Rob doing that. And getting it teed up for us and Cameron, of course, for taking his time to survey it.
Can we just replicate, the sun is there, so it doesn't fall apart?
I guess we can fix the sign that's there, but we can't change it or modify it or move it or take it out of the ground, so.
Okay.
Anyway, I'll keep you posted.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then. Um, Brenda, you have anything you need to share?
No, I just uh went to several public health meetings this past week and um all it seems well.
Uh, I represented the commissioner's office last night and swearing in Holly Sloan. Uh, to her new position.
On which board?
Uh, mental health, there's so many, mental health. Uh, and she's very nice and uh we had already approved her, of course, to take the position, so. It was just a uh a a nice invite for us to go down and swear her in. This morning I went to Soil and Water. Uh, and listened to them, uh, had a really nice breakfast, so it was worth the effort and. But yeah, some good things are happening.
And then this afternoon, we go to Delaware, we're uh, we're on Delaware, Knox, Marion, Moro County. Uh, solid waste meeting, we do that quarterly. So we'll be doing that. And then one of the things that's in the townships area is is going and doing the ratification. Of the uh EPA guidelines that we need to do every five years. Um, I maybe this lasts for fifteen years. Um, so. Yeah, if there's nothing else for us to do, we'll go ahead and sign our bills and we will.
A motion or adjourn?
My second.
And we stand adjourned.